Good, good morning, everybody. Um, I think we still have people joining the call here uh this morning, apologies with a slight technical issue. Um, even after two and a half years of Covid and Zoom or Covid and the Zoom and team calls. Anyway, we're uh we're delighted here this morning to be able to uh have a Fingal Business Forum in conjunction with Fingal County Council. Uh, my name's Anthony Cooney and uh hosting the event here this morning from our offices in in Dublin Airport. And uh just to mention about the council, we as a Chamber of Commerce could work very collaboratively with Fingal County Council across a wide a number of uh issues pertaining to the business community. And we do recognise the very good work they do across all of those sectors. I'm joined here this morning by the Chief Executive of Fingal County Council, Anne Marie Farley. And John Quinlevan, the Director of Services, Economic Enterprise, Tourism and Cultural Development. Uh, we will, Anne Marie will go through the presentation shortly. And as she goes through it, if you have any questions, please put them into the chat box. And uh I'll channel the questions that we can, I can see them here, and I'll channel the questions then at the end to Anne Marie. So Anne Marie, if it's okay with you, I'll get the morning to you.
Good morning, Anthony, and thank you very much for the introduction. I'm delighted to be here this morning. I see some names I recognise and others I don't. So just to give you a brief introduction to myself. Um, Anne Marie Farley, Chief Executive here in Fingal since twenty nineteen. Um, a career public servant, I began my career in Dublin County Council. And I've worked in Fingal since um it formed in nineteen ninety-four. Um, so I'm I'm very familiar with the county and it's a it's a county I'm passionate about. Always anxious to do the right thing and to make sure it's a good place to to live, work and visit. And so that that's principally what our day job is about. Glad to be joined by John Quinlevan here today. He's the Director of Economic Development. But I have a strong management team in addition to John, um who work across all the various directors in directors in the county. Um, basically trying to drive forward the county from from the perspective of economic development, but also as a place to live. Um, and making the county a good place essentially. I wanted to give you a sense of the scale of the county and the scale of the business that we're operating here in Fingal. Um, it's grown significantly since I joined in twenty nineteen and before that, um our population has consistently grown. Um, from from a low, I suppose, back in nineteen ninety-four to now, you know, three hundred thousand. But also, it, you know, very much recognised now as being part of Dublin, the Dublin region. Um, obviously, the benefit of the economic activity we have in the county is something that's is really good for the local authority, but I also hope what we do is good for your business. Um, and happy to discuss through, you know, the the presentation that I'm making today, but also your perspective of doing business in the county um later on in the meeting today. And so our budget for twenty twenty-three is a strong budget. Um, I know Anthony's going to move on the slides there. Um, we've a budget of three hundred and thirty-three million. I suppose it's no surprise when you think about what's in the news at the moment that most of our budget is spent on housing and building. Um, and I suppose from that perspective, um the the income for that comes principally from government. And of course, from our social tenants, so it's very much self-financing. Um, in terms of the the rest of our priorities, operationally from our road transport and safety and also our recreation and amenity, key spend areas for the county. They're the two areas that make the county, I suppose, feel and look different. That's what makes your towns and villages um look um clean and well-maintained. That's where we spend our operational budget um for those areas. Moving on then to our capital budget, again, a major significant spend of almost a billion um planned up to twenty twenty-five. So was the benefit I have now that I'm three years in, um heading into the fourth year, is that um, a lot of the projects that were at inception when I came in are now either on-site or about to go on-site. We've put a lot of effort into our housing, making sure that we have many projects ready to go. I mean, in this year, we'll have thirteen projects, thirteen housing sites open, um bit where we're building social housing. And that compares to sixty-eight sites that are privately owned, that are constructing building. So you can see that we're a major player in housing construction, and the funding for that comes from government. Um, but it's it's more than half of our capital spend. And we have also exciting plans, and we'll go through that later on in terms of active travel. Also protecting the heritage, you know, those heritage properties, um Malahide Castle or Gillan Newbridge. Um, always protecting those so that they're better um um each year with our investment. And then, of course, Swords Castle here, where we're developing the Swords Cultural Quarter. Anybody who lives or works in Swords would have seen that we've now closed our car park on the top of Seetown Road. That's because the enabling works are beginning next week for the Swords um Library, Art Centre and Theatre. And and that's going to begin construction this year. So the enabling works dealing with the archaeology and the site infrastructure works will happen from next week. So a big change in in the town of Swords, but also, I suppose, protecting that heritage heritage piece of Swords Castle. And on an active travel perspective, we'll go through the details of the projects later on. But you'll see, I suppose, and it's something I want to alert businesses to, you'll see that construction happening in every town and village. So just so that you know what it is, we'd be planning it in a way that'll be the least disruptive. Um, but we want to hear from you if there's any issues in relation to those construction projects. But you see, any entity that's about to spend a billion in the county, I hope will have spin-off benefits to to other businesses and make sure that, you know, we keep keep some of that economic growth within the county, but also, of course, make the place just better as a place to live and do business. Um, just in terms of where the money comes from that capital spend, um grants, as I mentioned, largely for the housing and the active travel and investment, a lot of that funding coming from government as a local authority, I have to be ready to spend that money. So when it's available from government, and it is a key priority for government, um right now, obviously, the delivery of housing and the deliver of a delivery of um active travel, I need to be ready to spend it. So you'll see that we have teams working in those areas. That's where um we have prioritised our activity, trying to get that money into the county, first of all. And then, secondly, the benefits of having better active travel and also trying to deal with that housing issue, which I suppose ah, I suppose, I would say from my perspective, the scale of our activity in that area will yield benefits in the coming year. Um, we will, I suppose, we're safer and feel better than we have for quite some time in terms of housing delivery, because we know and we can see in sight where the projects are going to either get started or already I'm about to deliver housing. So I just wanted to give you that certainty that, you know, there is a plan and we're working very strongly to it. Development contributions come in as well, and that, tho- those funding, um they come with the development that happens both for housing and from a commercial perspective. Um, we have a good, strong activity in the county. It didn't stall at all during Covid. You'll have seen the likes of the um the warehousing, for example, that was de- delivered between the N two and the M one um along the M fifty fringe there, right through Covid. Huge spin-off from, I guess, from the airport, but from other activity in terms of um new um international companies coming in to locate in the county. And they've yielded some levies for us. That's important because we have to protect the road infrastructure and make sure that we invest in that all of the time to make sure people can get to and from work. And I'll go through the, through some of the projects that are happening um in order to deal with some of those issues. Um, we have to provide some of the funding ourselves through our revenue budget. You'll find that spend will happen in the likes of our economic development areas for tourism projects, heritage protection and and other um issues. Um, but a good, strong spend and we're ready to spend it is what I'd say. You know, we see those projects getting closer to site if they're not already on site. So you'll see that activity happening again right throughout the county. Then I mentioned just um on the next slide, they are strong, they're a strong management team. So I'm going to go through what each of them does. Um, what each director, each department is responsible for. No more than any other organisation with a staff of sixteen hundred, you know, we're a big entity. We need to make sure that we have a good working environment and that we we get the most out of our people. Um, we have embraced blended working as many have, for those that are eligible. Half of those have opted to work the three days in the office and two days remote. We're well-equipped. We rolled out our digital strategy at the very beginning of Covid um at a pace. So that we were ready from, I think, within two months in to to work seamlessly from home or in the office. So um that's well in place. It's working, it's working well. We are finding it difficult to retain staff. There's a lot of opportunities for our staff right across and the public and private sectors. So we have to compete like, like I know many of your businesses do, to try and retain staff, and that hybrid working is is does help us do that. Um, our elected members, of course, as well, operate in the same way, which gives them benefits. They're part-time councillors, you know, it's important that they, we make it as easy as possible for them to do their job. So that hybrid option works well for them as well. Um, we've just presented our annual report to to council last night. That's what we did last year. We have a service delivery plan and um about what we're going to do this year. Um, and of course, our budget, the revenue capital that I've just brought you through. So very strong governance in the council. Um, we're very much controlled by the policy programme set by our council. Um, and that's the the strategy we work to as a management team. Um, and of course, we've just come through the Fingal Development Plan, which is the five-year planning policy for the county. Came, became effective last Thursday. Um, now it's the planning policy programme for the next five years. What land is suitable for commercial development, what's suitable for housing, recreation and amenity and all those other land uses that you'll see around the county. Um, operationally, I suppose, any local government or local authority I, in my view, should have their priority, their county. What does their county look like, feel like to be in, you know, does it have a high standard of maintenance? Is there high-quality work happening in the county? Um, we have given priority that to that operational piece, driven by the Director Mary T Daly. Um, again, we um have allocated more resources into this area. During Covid and beyond it, right now, we have additional funding available to us. And that's about spending the money in your local area, making sure that the places, place looks well. The type of work we do is uh about keeping the regional local roads um fit for purpose. On the public lighting side, we have now ninety-six percent of our public lighting LED, which obviously has delivered huge dividends in terms of energy efficiency, but also, I suppose, bit recognised as being so important when the costs associated with electricity has gone up. We weren't hit as badly um through the increase in costs because we had that work complete. Um, public lighting is our main energy user in the county. Um, traffic management and parking, road openings from the perspective of all the utilities, we're still one of those counties where where the 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 demand from business is high, the demand from communities and is high. And the utilities are working here constantly, try to make that as efficient as possible, make them to be be as sufficient as possible. But again, um huge demand, quite a busy area for us. The street cleaning recycling centres, um a big priority for me in terms of trying to deal with those little black spots, making sure we're a clean county. We have allocated a lot of resources into that area. And I think it is yielding dividend dividends. I think we have a good reputation um for being a clean county and certainly want to keep it. Um, our regional parks and open spaces, um considerable amount of work in that area. The regional parks, I suppose, serve the region almost destinations at this stage. So we draw in visitors, two million visitors to Malahide Castle and Domain um each year. And there are people that just go to the park to enjoy it, you know, and we're pleased that that's happening. We have new regional parks in development. We're looking at the River Valley in Swords because we now own a lot more of the land in that location and we're developing it as a regional park. It's performed more as a local park up to now, um and that master plan will be going for planning this year, again, a major investment. And similarly with Braymore and Valbriggan, where the castle is there, but a lot of land available to us to develop as a park, and the planning is in place for that. So you'll see more developments happening in that area. Anyone who knows about Briggan will see that O'Dwyers, the G A Club have developed their own facility in that location. And that was to do with a commercial transaction that we we um entered into with O'Dwyers. Where we are, will be developing their land, their original site where they are located presently um for housing and other purposes, and we'll be bringing planning through on that in the coming year or so. Playing pitches in big demand, young county, as you know, um a lot of demand from all sports codes. We're developing a lot of projects there. I'll bring you through those later. And I'm not going to go through the rest, um other than to say, pleased to now have a harbour master in place for particularly for for Scaries and Balbriggan, a lot of work to be done in those harbours and a lot of planning underway to try and get some better maintenance work there and also some guidance for the people who use the harbours so that we protect them at all times, make them more to be amenities than anything else. And then moving on, I suppose, we will just talk to you, but the the priorities are set out there. Um, I won't go through the list, but more of the same, I suppose, doing more um spending our money wisely, making sure it's invested well, um but also making sure that the place, the county, looks better as a result. So again, a lot of work to be done at all times in a county this size with the population we're serving. I'm going to focus a bit on housing next, and then that's led by Director Robert Burns. Um, I mentioned that we have thirteen um projects on site. And those five in January and February now started, um and the next three about to start. Um. We have plans for that in excess of three thousand homes and more pipeline being developed all of the time. So that's social housing predominantly, although some of our sites are mixed tenure. Delighted last week that Bala Mistone, which is a large site eh for twelve hundred units in Donna Bay, the first phase of that received planning permission from a board plan all last week. And I'm hopeful that could get to site soon. That's a uh private venture we have, we're in with Glenvee Developments. They were successful in the tender. And we're hopeful they'll get to site pretty quickly and ultimately build out those units. Fabulous site there along the distributor road, fantastic views of the coast, um within walking distance of the train station. Um, as I say, what's not to like, expect everybody will want to live eh in those homes when they're developed. Um, to bring you through some further projects that we have um on the next slide there. And new site that we're developing presently is Church Fields in in Mulhuddert, again, about a thousand homes. We are in the last stage of tender for the three hundred homes, um again, to get on site in September. But that's more about just housing, you know, we're delivering a a major park there. We're upgrading park at a park in the area for the existing residents as well, a new um distributor road there, which links the Damestown Industrial Estate right into the heart of um Dublin fifteen. So again, more about, more than about housing. We'll deal with some of those traffic issues, deliver active travel for the workers in the industrial estate as well. So it's a complicated project and I suppose just to make the point, it's much easier for us to open a site and develop, develop three hundred social homes. And that's a quicker project to deliver. It's a project that's paid for directly by government. And you don't have to worry about selling homes at the end of it. Um, so the timeline for three hundred homes that are social is probably um about eighteen months or two years quicker to deliver if we only delivered social homes. But in this area, we're trying to improve the tenure mix, a lot of social homes there already. So that's why we wanted sixty percent private homes in the area. And it's a more complicated project that depends on some private funding as well. So the procurement and the development strategy does take a bit longer. But we, I suppose, always strive to do the right thing, and this will be a good development when it's built out. And those three hundred homes will be on site in September. Some homes already built in this area um in some infill sites, and they're opening right now with new homes. I think it's a hundred and thirty homes will be occupied before the mid-year, and and they're they're principally social homes. Moving on, another just small scheme I'll dwell on, but it's on the Rathby Road here in Swords. On the next slide, um again, a small apartment scheme on an infill site um of eleven, one, two and three-bed apartments. And again, that was an old depot that we had. So just to show that we try and identify suitable sites sites for housing and get them built, built as a result. But a state-of-the-art project, you know, um very um modern design and very energy efficient, um with a green roof from the biodiversity perspective as well. So again, a good scheme that you'll see ultimately completed in it within the next twelve months or so. The budget in housing has gone up. I mentioned it's mostly um funded by government. That's operationally and from a capital perspective. I was Director of Housing back in twenty, I left in twenty fifteen, I think from two thousand and twelve to twenty fifteen. At that time, we had about five thousand social homes. So we're now managing six thousand four hundred social homes. So you can see the scale of increase and the pace during that time. Um, there's other schemes coming in, of course, from government to try and maximise um potential of the area and every local authority area. That Creek Conne House scheme is proven very successful. It it's about the refurbishment of vacant properties. Um, it's a grant that you can get um fifty thousand if the house is derelict or thirty thousand if it's less severely um in 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 trouble. So it's proven attractive to to people who are going out and buying these properties. You'll see more and more of them for sale, and then the benefit of the grant allows them refurbish them. Great scheme for town centres as well, where you see some vacancy. Um, we're in Fingal, we have a very low vacancy rate, less than five percent. But in other counties, it's much higher, and it is a good town centre scheme, trying to get those properties back into use. And I mentioned the six thousand four hundred properties, we have to maintain those, um and some of the older stock needs to, has, needs a higher um involvement from a maintenance perspective. So again, the budget for that increasing all of the time. And then the whole energy efficiency and retrofitting, making sure the good insulation standards and better B E O ratings are delivered by ourselves. And we delivered above target last year, and ninety-one delivered, and again, the target going up this year up up to a hundred and thirty, but we intend to do about a hundred and fifty. And when I say that target, that's set by government and somewhat funded by by government, about seventy percent of the cost is met by government. That delivers heat pumps, solar panels, insulation, that type of work, um is a fairly deep retrofit to housing in the county. Um, good to see it rolled out in the likes of the elderly schemes um who have benefited significantly from reduced heating costs in the last winter from any of the the housing that have been completed. Um, I won't dwell on the next slide, but just to demonstrate that scale again. And sixty-four thousand of an annual budget back in twenty nineteen, now going up to a hundred thousand, and that's to do with an increase in stock. Um, some of our supply is also funded on that annual basis. You hear mention in the media of of housing assistance payments and RAS and also leasing, their pro- their social housing that we're bringing in from the private sector and are then rented out as social housing. And some of that um spend and income is through the operational budget and again funded directly from government. Um, the benefit of leasing and half is that it does bring in units quickly. So um it's it's a key way we address people who are at risk of homelessness, um just to mention that that just perspective as well. Um, I will mention tenant in situ, which you'll have heard in the news as well, where eviction notices um the end of the end of the eviction ban happened from the first of April. I would say we're not hit by a tsunami. And there's been a slow increase in terms of the number of tenants making contact with us. We will be buying the hundred and twenty-five properties that have, has been set as a target by government for us. So that's landlords who want to sell their property are willing to sell it to us and where the tenant can stay in situ. Um, again, that target seems just about right at the moment. You know, it seems to meet the demand. If it changes, we'll obviously respond to that. And um in and I think government have committed to give us um a further allocation if that's necessary. But for now, it's a steady as you go. And we're able to cope with anybody who's risk, at risk of homelessness, we're able to find solutions for them. Um, still a challenge, I'm not going to underestimate that or, um but at the same time, it is our business, it is a job that we're used to doing, supporting tenants. Um, and I know our housing staff will always work um their hardest to make sure no one ends up in homelessness. Um, and where they do, we work even harder to make sure that the exit from homelessness is as quickly as possible. Moving on then to community and sports. And with a growing population and a young population and, of course, a diverse population. That integration piece, making sure people have um a place to gather and um be a community is important to us. And we have about thirty-five community centres. Some of those are older than others and many require upgrades. Again, a significant work programme in that area. Um, we've taken on a new community centre, which was previously owned by the church, um and again, just to help that community to make sure they get supports for running the community centre. The large round building on the right-hand side of that slide, which looks a bit like New Grange is a new centre that we've just started to build in Meextown, um just there on the city fringe in Fingal County Council, but a a very densely populated area with the young population. That's that needs a new community centre. So you'll see it there. State-of-the-art community centre in the planning and for some time, but delighted to get it on site. And that will be funded from a combination of development levies and from our own funds. And again, a new role that we've taken on in in the last year is the Ukrainian response. Um, we we deal with the, some of the emergency accommodation. We also deal with that integration piece. And conscious that a lot of our hotels um are, as hotel beds are in use to support the Ukrainian refugees. But again, we're rolling out some of the schemes to to deal with the direct accommodation by private owners. Um, and also um that integration piece and dealing with all the other response agencies to make sure there are no gaps in the service provision. So again, a new, a new job or a new role responsibility for us. But we've taken that on in the last year and trying to roll it out in a strong way so that no difficulties arise in the county. Um, and again, community and sports is is led by Director Robert Burns. Environment, Climate Action and Active Travel, um led by Director David Story. Um, again, you know, I've seen the work in the county just in terms of rolling out protected cycleways right in our towns and villages, mobility management plans as well, and also active travel plans for for our towns so that there's an integrated planning system in place. And the key projects for mobility and active travel plans this year would be Badbriggan and Scaries. We do a lot of work with schools, trying to get um children to move away from the car and in terms of their parents dropping them to school and also but, you know, moving that, removing that congestion, trying to make it safe for children to walk and cycle to school. And obviously, the rule, the rollout of bike sharing and e-bikes, key to getting more people using this as a mode of transport. But also to having our town centres a bit more user-friendly, and I hope that will deliver a business support ultimately um to all of our businesses in the county as well. Um, just on terms of budget then, a budget in twenty-two of twenty-five million, thirty-four projects, similar enough budget this year. You'll see that um we have a combination of projects in the planning, um and also on site with um about a quarter of our projects on site this year. Key project to be delivered um in twenty twenty-three um will be the R one three two, that could be from here in Swords up to Balbriggan. Um, and then uh the planning of a of active travel between Swords and the airport as well. So you'll see some of those in place already and more under construction. And there's a list of projects on the next slide. I'm not going to go through it, but it does give an indication that it's right across the county and how the spend will happen. Um, so a lot of work in that area, quite a new area for us. Um, at this scale of activity, um and it's a key priority for the government um with Eamon Ryan, the the Minister for for this uh at a government level. Again, just further information that on the next slide, the the school, safer routes to school is a great project, the school streets, you know, again, just basically, particularly at primary school level, introducing a new way for chip to children and their families and making the streets more friendly for them and giving families the confidence to to allow their children walk and cycle to school. We have a walk-in and cycling officer whose job is exactly that. We build the cycle lanes and then we have to make sure people use them. So again, to try and encourage that use and get it happening where it can. And so there you go, that's that's um what's happening in twenty-three in that area. And the next project or slide gives you some idea of the types of projects. Um, the protected cycle lanes, obviously, from a safety perspective, are the best um solution. Um, where they're segregated from from traffic and where it all possible. And again, encouraging people to walk and cycle. Bike share on the next slide, I suppose, some of the numbers there, but just to show you the growth in that area. Um, I suppose one of the issues that's becoming more Issues that's becoming more obvious is bike storage can be quite a difficulty for people. Who live in apartments or other types of housing where storage is not um in great supplies, so again. They may not want to sacrifice that storage for bikes and the bike sharing and having those schemes available to them, no more than car sharing. Is proving um really popular um across the county, but also that integrate, you know, right across the. Dublin region, you know, where you can pick up a bike in the town centre and and bring it out to Fingal where you live, you know, that. Cooperation between ourselves and Dublin City being important in that space and being led out by by David Story. Um, as a director, so twenty thousand bike share journeys in twenty two and growing is is the key point there. Um, the Dublin region have just gone to tender for a charging infrastructure. Um, in the last two weeks, so again, to be rolled out in the likes of public car parks. Fast charging infrastructure to be available for those with electric cars and again. Making sure that um there's more availability right throughout throughout the region and in Fingal, of course. Um, again, an area that we're new to, um. We provide the site, the energy provider, eh invests in the infrastructure and a win win then for the private. Um, owner of the electric vehicle, so um more to be seen in that space in the coming year or so. Um, on the climate action plan and again, I suppose almost at the end of the current one and looking to to um. As was moved forward to our new one with with new government guidance recently issued. And we just to show you the types of um improvements that have happened in the last um number of years. And as a local authority, I suppose, we have been quite successful in reducing our um energy use. To some extent, I suppose we've done what was easier to do than perhaps making the next savings, but the next part of our plan. Will include the the likes so solar panels on some of our council buildings. And my projects are already underway to deliver some of that infrastructure in the coming year as well. And so moving on then to planning and strategic infrastructure, the stra- strategic infrastructure part of that. I've mentioned some of these projects, the photo there, um. Of the new glass house in our Gillan and Scarrys, and that was new, I should say restored glass house. Um, again, that's a project that opened last year, and below that is the Porterstown. Athletics track and all weather pitch, first project of its type in the county, probably the first project of its type developed by a local authority. Should be completed by the end of June this year. The athletics track, the only thing remaining to do is the lane of the athletics track, which is weather dependent, so. We will be doing that from um in the next week or so, we hope to start and get to get it laid within eight weeks or so. So you see the scale of that facility, very intense sports use populate po- possible of that type of facility. We recently opened an all weather pitch in in River Valley as well, and that was funded from part funded by the airport. As um a community investment has resulted from the new runway. And again, we opened a a new park in Old Town Swords as well, that's on the west of Swords on the Rathbain Road. In the last couple of months, so a lot of investment by us in recreational facilities. Needed because we have a young population and a growing population, um, but for intense use, so. To be shared amongst sports codes and clubs and to be used for seven days a week for as long. Of hours as possible, and that's the benefit of having this type of facilities over the traditional grass pitch. Some of the planned projects are there as well, you'll see right across the county, new projects planned. I mentioned the infrastructure, um, I suppose to some extent, the building of roads is not. Um, I suppose as a strategic priority for government in terms of their um national transport policy. However, sometimes they're necessary, whether it's to open economic lands, improve the servicing of economic lands or to open housing lands. The first two projects there, the hole in the wall road, that was to serve as housing lands there in the city fringe in Balgriffen. The Churchfields Link Road um services the housing land I mentioned earlier in terms of the housing projects, the the thousand units in Churchfields. But also that link to Damas Town, um, and the Snow Interchange, probably probably the biggest project that we've taken on for some time. It's there, um, a new bridge across the N three linking up to the enterprise zone and the jobs there. Um, will be finished um in the next six months or so, um, but a major project and has happened quite well, I think. Without um much disruption to the area, and again, will be. We'll stop that queue in on the N three and in the morning by workers going to the Dublin Enterprise Zone to work. And some of the other projects are there as well, we're about to get on site with the Angar Barn Hill Road and that's connected to housing development. And a planning permission that was granted last week as well, so again, projects that are underway, a significant spend. Um, mostly funded by government, some developmental contributions as well. Um, and you'll see the major strategic greenways, most of them destination tourism projects, planning permission for the Royal Canal to go in this year. And the Fingal Coastal Way planning permission probably mid next year, Sutton Malahide planning application this year as well. Um, and the M three improvements is a project on behalf of T I I um to to widen the M three. Um, as you head there to the the M fifty interchange, um, so a lot of infrastructure investment more than. I say the last twenty years, to be honest, all of them progressing well through the planning stage, planning getting very complex. Um, and um requiring a lot of expertise, you'll be aware of the um the amount of judicial reviews that are happening to projects. At the moment, so we do have to be careful in our planning to make sure we can. Defend defend our process if necessary, if if the projects ultimately end up going through the courts. Um, I won't dwell on the for planning, but you'll see again, always an eye to the next project or the next land that's suitable for development. Um, um, with projects well underway there and the new development plan in place. Um, on the next slide then, just some of the projects that. That have um that have been completed, um, from an economic development perspective. I always believe it begins with the development plan, having your land use plan right, so you know where suitable land uses can happen. Um, but we have more strategies beyond that in terms of the Dublin Back Fast Economic Strategy. And and some of the others that are listed there as well as the Fingo Local Economic and Community Plan, so just to make sure that we have that overall. Um, planning piece correct and that businesses know where they stand, their certainty for them. When they want to locate in the the county or to grow their business in the county, and that's the purpose of these strategies. As a promotional tool, but also just to give that planning strategy. Um, so that businesses can come and locate in the county with certainty and know the benefit of doing so and also where they. Can secure planning permission, for example, um, and in a more straightforward way. Town centre first is a government strategy as well, um, and again, we now have a town centre first officer. Whose job is basically to look at our town centres, see what needs to be improved, attract funding in. But to work with the community and businesses to do the right thing for each of the towns and try and do. Address any gaps, particularly economic gaps in the area, but also to get people living in the town centres. Which I think will be to the benefits of smaller retail retailers, for example, similar to what happened during Covid. Economic development is led by John Quinlevan, who will have a you'll have a chance to meet um shortly, and again. Driving strong economic plans, looking outwards, you know, dealing with um external stakeholders such as the Chamber of Commerce. Making sure that we are um not working in a vacuum, making sure that our policies suit. The policies that are needed by all the stakeholders in the county, and the I D A and Enterprise Ireland and others as well, very strong in the area. And of course, the work of the local enterprise office been key to the supports that are offered to businesses. We have um a strong budget then on the next slide as well, um, again. Um, just to to mention event management and glad to be back in business in that space, Flavours of Fingal will happen again this year. The concerts in Malahide again, um, already announced. Um, but also the likes of St Patrick's Day parades and other things getting back to normal this year, which I'm delighted with. Um, and I hope you'll have found a benefit from them in your towns and villages um um in March. And Flavours of Fingal were making a big effort to get the the Fingal back into Flavours and really wanting to attract. The local businesses to that event to make sure that they get the benefit from it. So no, there's a lot of work going on by John and others to try and secure that for the event um in. In at the end of June, I think it is, John will give you the date just for certainty later on. Um, and again, a strong capital, our capital program for economic development on the next slide. Um, I mentioned the Swords Cultural Quarter, you know, we have been talking about that, um, it's a complex project to design. Um, so now we're talking about it from the perspective of getting on site, you know, it's exciting, exciting times to get on site. Um, and to get building a project of this significance, just to mention anybody who knows Swords. Um, across the road from that site on C town road are some standard semi-detached houses, again. Aligned with the development of the cultural quarter will be a redevelopment of the housing site, delivering um apartments. Um, for for the town as well, um, a nice design site that's available on our website to look at. But just to make to minimise disruption with an integrated construction plan to try and get both of those projects delivered seamlessly without. And disruption to the town of Swords, uh industrial development is a key area for us. As always, we do have industrial land that is available for suitable enterprises who want to locate in the county. We have used it previously to secure some big investors, um, the likes of I B M. Um, initially, um, and things have moved on since then, but also a lot of the big farmer that have located in Dublin fifteen. Many are located on land that was previously owned by the council, we're very anxious to get development in Badbriggan happening. And to promote that as an area for economic development, we own a lot of land in that location that's suitable for that purpose, and so any of you businesses. That are interested in that area, um, talk to us and we'll try and do our best to help you. Um, just the grand hall there in Malahide is a facility, a tourism investment facility that we invested in and opened in twenty twenty two. Um, I'm sorry for taking so long to go through that presentation, I hope you found it interesting and that there was information that you could take away. Um, and maybe talk to us about again, I'm available now, as is John, to answer any questions you may have. Um, and again, thank you for taking the time to to attend the seminar this morning. Over to you, Anthony.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie, for what was a very comprehensive overview of what. Fingal County Council are involved and right across all the different departments that you have, and it's a. A lot of people don't understand the the depth and the reach of the local authority into the region where they live. And I know when I came into this job, I was actually surprised with the the amount of activity. That someone like Thingall County Council has and the impact it has on the locality, just just one one point on that, and you mentioned earlier on about the uh. The various strategic committees you've got, and like I, what I would say to that is that I would I would encourage businesses. To uh, I would encourage businesses to uh positively engage with those strategic policy committees. Where they can and volunteer if they want to come on it, any of the committees involved, I know that sometimes are oversubscribed. Maybe sometimes or not, but for people to step forward to uh help out and contribute to the local community conjunction with the local authority. Because you did mention that, you know, you're very conscious of the fact you don't want to work in a vacuum. And I I would encourage people to take part in everything you do, so in order to support you, so thanks to that, we have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Um. Uh, one of them is that, in relation to, like, one of the things that we find out in our business sentiment surveys, and we've just, we're just about to release. One very shortly, um, is that housing, obviously, it's the 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 key issue of of the day, I suppose, and um. It's the what we found in this particular survey is that rising cost for businesses is number one, and number two is housing, but housing still features up there. And is that the investment in housing, it's a hundred and one million, I think, for this year. Is it liable to increase year on year or stay the same, and also been significant increase the last couple of years? Or is there a likelihood for significantly more funds to be channelled into the provision of housing? Uh, within Fingal, because Fingal is probably the growing fastest growing area in the country. So is it is it getting an exponential increase in the additional funding?
Thanks, thanks, Anthony, I I have to say, first of all, funding is not a barrier to housing delivery or delivery right now. And what are the barriers, and I mean that from a local authority perspective, it is a barrier from the private sector perspective. And their cost of housing delivery does not does not match the ability of the customer to pay. So, for example, the apartments are are difficult to deliver right now, the unit cost is high. But there's a lot of work going happening in that area. Um, and also, I suppose I would say some of the changes to planning recently will help. That issue, we've got some very good planning permissions for the county through in the last month, in excess of four thousand units. Their schemes that are are at an appropriate density, but not so high a density that they're unviable. So I know from dealing with a lot of the main landowners and developers in the county. That they're more optimistic now, having secured those permissions that they will get on site and get building. Um, so it's a complicated problem, um, money from a social housing perspective is not a difficulty. Um, mobilizing on site does take time. Um, and that apartment issue where private supply is slowing. Has caused a difficulty in the last eighteen months, um, but I think the fact that there's some change. To the planning permissions will help that, but listen, it's not a problem that can be solved overnight. And the key thing is that we deal with each of the problems and address them, I'm leading on a Dublin housing delivery task force. That's a task force that involves all the key players in housing supply in um in the country, um, including at a senior departmental level. We're working hard to try and address all the barriers, Dublin City has probably more of a difficulty than Fingal has. Because we are have traditionally delivered an affordable product, but. It centers around apartment delivery and how we can make those viable and a lot of work going on in that space, so I just want to reassure everybody that. The work is intense, just trying to unblock all of those barriers. Um, and that includes infrastructure project delivery, I mentioned some of the projects that we've done. Purely building um an access road or a distributor road in order to open up housing lands. So that type of forward planning and delivery is essential to deal with the housing crisis, um, and. I not all the works, not all of the problems have been addressed, but I think we're always a long way to solving problems when we know them. So just to reassure everybody that works well underway and those, the key part of the solution, I'd say, is though. That for those four thousand units that were permitted in the last month, which I see getting on site almost immediately. Um, so that's that will do a lot for the Fingal housing supply, um, but more work to be done, no doubt, in that area.
Thanks, Anne Marie, um, one of the the remarkable statistics, statist- statistics you came up with was that. Of the street lighting, ninety six percent of it is now L E D, that's huge. You know, especially from where we were, I remember, you know, a couple of years ago, this project started. Um, you know, the 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 installation of these around the country, and there must be thousands and thousands of street lights within just Fingal. And yet ninety six percent are L E D, that's a remarkable figure. Um, so obviously, well done, well done there, but one of the things you you mentioned earlier as well was the uh. Is the 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 question actually was about the um. The upgrading of the housing for um, uh, the safer retrofits and so on. And is there a policy of doing a complete retrofit for all of the houses that you're going to do? Or is it just going to be solar panels on the roof or? Is it a touch retrofit, what's the? What's what's the plan?
An absolute requirement to do the deep retrofit, um, we need to achieve a B E O rating, um. Of of two, I think, so we're effectively delivering a energy rated houses where possible. Um, it's complete upgrade of the heating system, insulation, solar panels, anything that. Helps with improving the energy efficiency of the house, it's a spend of about a hundred and ten thousand per house or so and a grant of about seventy. And so we are going above um what the grant will allow us to do, and that. There's a a reason for that, it's because it's a deep retrofit. Um, we, there are other works that are necessary as well outside of the energy efficiency works. And we only want to do the job once, so we go in and do a complete upgrade of the house and when the work happens. Um so the targets from government are set, but we've a lot of work to do by twenty thirty, you know, so. And we're looking to speed it up and also to um I suppose to make sure that our work. Delivers what's required. So yeah, that's well underway and we, I suppose the benefit of starting slowly as you you create a model. That can be replicated then as you move forward. So again, from a procurement and tendering perspective as well, just getting those pieces right that we can. Roll out future schemes more quickly. And I might ask John to come in on the the LED and the number of lights and all of that. Um I do know the last four percent is the most difficult, um but John might have a comment on that.
Uh yeah, just um thanks, Anne Marie. Good morning, everybody. Uh just on the LEDs, we we. We initiated a project here a few years ago to to get the ISO fifty thousand and one. Uh for all of our energy ratings, we were a bit off track on our our energy targets, but. Uh a a huge contributor contributor to that was uh was the LED conversion on 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 public lights. And the achieving the ISO uh allowed us to uh to move significantly ahead of our targets. I I think from memory, there's about fifty thousand public lights in the county. Um I I it's a it's a huge figure. Um and there's, it's an ongoing project. Uh a a lot of it uh has been achieved over the years by having electrical engineers. Uh and a dedicated project to it. Uh it was a decision taken about five years ago to to commit fully to it and get. Get that that project delivered and uh like Anne Marie says, the the last, those last few are kind of. Random lights that are out there in difficult places, difficult to reach, but they're uh they're they're continuing to work on it and. It's expected to be finished within the next, by by the end of this calendar year, so. I just, I'm re- asked earlier about the flavors of Fingal, the the dates, it's it's the first and second of July. Uh uh in Newbridge House. Um so obviously, it'll be a a bigger and better event. Uh uh than every other year, it gets bigger and better every year. Uh and it becomes a, it's a bigger contribution every year. Um just in terms of my own role and economic development, and you've seen the the last few slides there around. The direct uh expenditure on on economic development uh from my department. Uh but just just for people to understand our role here in economic development. Um we see ourselves as kind of the link uh between yourselves in business and the rest of the local authority. You've seen Anne Marie's extensive uh presentation and. I can tell you that doesn't cover the half of what we do. I mean, it's the amount of detail. Uh that is in this organization, there's there's statistics out in our sector that we provide. In the region of nine hundred services to the public and to business across the whole range. Uh and uh Anne Marie's presentation will give you a sense of that, but not the full uh range. It's a very complex organization, very difficult to navigate, uh even for ourselves internally. Uh so our role here in economic development is to act as a guide for yourselves in business. Uh and to put you, direct you to the right part of the organization. Uh for us as well and for us within the council to function effectively. Uh we would hope that you would come through us to go to those different parts so that. In economic development, we have a good overall sense of what business needs and what individuals, individual businesses are looking for. Uh when you come in, uh and we can link different parts of the organization to uh to. Uh whatever it is you're trying to do. Um so that's our main role. We have very strong relationships with 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 your with your chamber, uh with Anthony and Helen and staff in there. Uh we have strong relationships with the IDA, uh Enterprise Ireland as well, uh just for any new businesses and existing businesses. And we're we're here and we're available to to help anybody who needs to. Uh avail of services from the council, look to get LinkedIn uh to any of the particular parts or just just. Is confronted with the complexity of our organization, we can help you navigate that. Uh uh for smaller businesses, uh Anne Marie already already mentioned the Leo. Uh so uh employ up to ten employees is what the Leo has been targeted at. That's in the process of potentially changing to up to fifty employees at the moment. Uh it's not uh fully nailed down yet, but that is that is something that is changing. Uh and obviously, with Enterprise Ireland's involvement, there's a strong uh uh focus on uh potential for export. Export opportunities, uh but the kinds of services that you can get in the Leo, there's a very comprehensive uh website there. Uh but business advice, mentoring programs, uh training programs, there's a huge training program for for any small business. Uh financial support, so feasibility, priming and expansion grants. Uh there was over a million euro given out last year. Uh in those grants. Um and they run a very extensive uh program of networking events. Uh uh and other uh um other links with business. So. So look, um if uh if anybody does need to link in with the local authority, they can come through uh the chamber. Uh or you can come directly to the economic development unit here in in council and we'd be more than happy to uh to assist.
Okay, tha- thanks, John, and thanks, Anne Marie. We don't have any other questions going forward. We don't have any other, no, there's not in there. We got that covered. Um so listen, thank you very much for your time, Anne Marie, and to you, John. For the presentation, a very comprehensive presentation. Thank you all for attending and slumberful.